All right, we will call to meeting, call to order, Chisholm City Council Meeting, September 11th, 2024. Susan, would you please take real call?
Commissioner Thompson.
President.
Commissioner Michael Raha. President. Commissioner Fonter. Abbott. Commissioner Talaba.
President.
Commissioner Laki. Abbott. Mayor Lee.
Here. All right, council, look for a motion to adopt the agenda. We have a couple pages real quick under new business. Chief Manager is no longer here, so Officer Boukab will be taking that.
He's just not here today.
He's not here, huh?
He's just not here today.
No longer here. Oh, well, he's no longer here today.
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 Sorry. It's not here today. You almost got promoted. And we are going to remove items 11 and 12 under Stephanie. We're going to bring those over for review and we'll bring it back to the council at a later time. So with those two changes, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Before we jump into our pledge of allegiance, I would just like to take a moment of silence as we remember today, the anniversary of September 11th. Respect out of all those people that we lost, first responders, civilians, and everyone that perished after that, so. We'll do the pledge of allegiance now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start today with public participation. Thank you, Marty. Ms. Lo, good evening. Just a reminder, we will start five minutes timer once you start talking.
Well, I found out through land and the news between Grand Rapids, Minneapolis, and a few other places that the city of Chisholm does not own the property, that the two canapes and picnic tables are not. So Mr. West did not do his homework, and this is the duty of the act. So they are not sitting on city property, they're sitting on state property. And, okay, that was out. And as far as the contract, it went to this under the impression that that was the half circle that was taking place, not a parking lot. And the government should permit pendulum there for 10 months. And Mr. Mont was not at that time, and he would call me back. I talked to Randy for me and that, and he said that's a very dangerous situation with that involved the parking lot that we shouldn't have got a permit for, with the idea that it gets veteran friendly for families, which makes no sense to them, you know, that it's that iron rule, the veterans in the room. Said that when you have children in car seats, we back out onto a highway like that, especially during events, because that is pretty much an event location. It's not really family during. The DNR also stated that you have to be 60 feet away from the water. It's not 60 feet. And then when we come to putting a structure from the middle of the highway the other direction, it's not ready. So where this and who got all the information to do this, and I would say the city engineer, I mean, I hate to say this, but you are the engineer that's doing these projects, there should have been some input of it between zoning, the certification board in the south. And the city does own every single lot down the way the other way. There is a piece of property on the right-hand side of the county building that's up for auction, actually with the state. And the trees with the DNR, they were as a concern, yes, black ash trees need to go because of the disease and stuff, but there's no reason to take it down or anything else. You can't do it on Vermillion, you can't do it in the Nogda, you can't do it Detroit by this. You can't do it Virginia, Minnesota. I've talked to many, many people, like there are a lot of time, a lot of light on gas, and to be honest, I'd rather be retired too. But the canapes and picnic tables need to go. If you're not going to do that, then there will be further action, but not necessarily all of them. So just so you're aware of that, because there is no right to put them there anymore. You don't own the property. Period. You don't own it. There's no deed, there's no title to the city, there's none of those things. It doesn't exist. Five different people coming back. So I guess now we have that, the lot, not to mention the pavement and the asphalt that just had in there, because the county business is supposed to be a half of a drive-through thing where people don't come for dating party. And they, I guess the state said, gee, if you have a veterans memorial that a veteran put there that worked for the city, why would they not put those there? Put them on the plant that, relocate them, put them, just everybody's happy, no problem. If I put a house in there because of the elevation that you raised up, the cabinets and picnic tables on, I would be looking at the brown roof tops. That's my view. You have council people that live on the lake, they've got a beautiful view because the city took the trees down. So we're going to have to come to some kind of decision here eventually, because otherwise it's going to be further action. Because I didn't count the same. When my husband was ninety, the agreement was that four of those people on that board said, it will be only dentures, I promise you want. So I don't know where that went, but it went somewhere else. But anyway, the city does not own that property, which means I could buy it, you could try to get a title for it, but then I'm going to fight you, because maybe I want that title. You see what I'm saying? There's no deeds to that. Minneapolis, two different addresses, two different people, five different things. There is no deed for the city, just no contract. So how can you put something up that you don't own it? And if you were going to do that, even if you owned the property, it should have been the five homes on the lake should have said whether they wanted it or not, because your only other lots, you could have scattered these things. You could put them out of sport, put them in front of Miss Bones. She loved it.
I'm going to stop you right there, Ms. Lo. Thank you.
But make a decision eventually.
Okay, moving on. Council reports. Councilor Hallivusson.
I don't have a report.
Councilor Michael Raha, good evening.
Good evening. I also do not have a report.
Councilor Hallivah.
I attended a special council meeting we had on the end of the month last month. Attended the joint council meeting with giving at the airport authority, attended the PUC committee meeting, and a special Santur's stewardship meeting last month.
Thank you very much. I also have no report this evening. Okay, give us director. City engineer, Jim, good evening.
Okay, very brief. Just to give you an update on a couple of our projects, we still do not have a date from the subsidy by June this issue when they're coming in to do our mill and overlay projects. When we held pre-construction conference about a month ago, they indicated it was going to be right before or right after late today, but we've been checking, but haven't gotten any kind of a firm date. And then things are progressing very well with our dry weather down on Fifth Street. The utility work is first all done, except what they're doing back in that alley where we're replacing sewer and water. But you'll see a lot of concrete work going in this week on sidewalks and curb and vectors, so things are progressing well there. That's all I have. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Public Works, Larry, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Just a few updates. We're switching seasons now. We're a little shorthanded, so some of that work would just delayed a little bit, including trees right now. We do have a couple seasonal staff, so if there's some of those one-off little projects that we may have missed or something, we'll soak that month, and we'll leave it when we can. But those things start to fall off now, so we took down Fries today on Lake Street, and we'll get the geese boppers off the lake and get those old steam things put away for the winter. It's going to come eventually, so. But in that regard, this splash pad is still on right now. We are doing some work down there, but the contractor is just spotty right now with little stuff. So, and he was able to keep his little area safe in our area, so has been hard block down there. So the splash pad's still open for a few more days, at least as the weather holds for the kids there, so. We continue to move, just, you know, we'll be done patching this week or in the next week, and we'll start home salts in for our winter stock, so. With that, Mayor, that's all I got for you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Larry Supervisor, Katie, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I was excited to share that our call to artists for our new community mural has been finalized, and it's open for submissions. There is a portion of the call out that does include a concept discovery meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, October 29th, at 5:00 at the library. And at this meeting, artists will get an opportunity just to see the space, talk to community members, and just gain a deeper insight on the community vision for this mural. It's essentially a pre-bid meeting. We will also share the feedback and data that we've been receiving from community surveys, and just also an opportunity for the artists to ask any questions that they have before the final submission. And submissions will be due Monday, December 2nd, so if anyone in the audience or at home knows of any artists that would be interested, please have them visit the Chisholm, City of Chisholm website. We have the call to artists posted there, or you can reach out to me at the library if you have any questions. There's that. And then, also, I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank Andy Enrico. He's probably one of our more passionate members of the community that I know. And during hospital printing day back in May, we were able to stand down two picnic benches and a table that were in pretty rough shape that are located right between City Hall and the library in that green space. And this weekend, Andy volunteered his time and donated supplies to repaint everything in the space, and it truly looks amazing. So his actions just really speak, following in towards what can be accomplished at a grassroots level and the difference passionate members of the community can make. So thank you to Andy, if you want to pass that. They look really good.
Yeah, absolutely do. Thank you, Katie. Thank you. City clerk treasurer, good evening. Devin, welcome.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the new city clerk treasurer, Devin Tyler. Just a little bit of all me, you know, got to go 13 and a half years' experience in public accounting, and I'm looking forward to utilizing the skills and knowledge to help the council and the citizens of Chisholm. No report tonight. I think we did partly reports, so I'll probably leave that.
Perfect. Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
City administrator, Stephanie, good evening.
Good evening. Devin and I and all of the staff have been working diligently on getting the budget ready to be able to present to council coming up, probably the first weekend in October, I'm hoping. Also, I just want to give a quick update from our previous council meeting when we had Nick here from Thirty West. We were able to, the public works team was able to go over and video his sanitary line. Me and Jim and Mandy met with him after that happened, and he had to go back and discuss with his business partners, and once they decide what they're going to do, they'll come back to the council. So that's important now.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephanie? Okay, moving along to consent agenda. It consists of the list of bills, communications, minutes of previous city council meetings, payroll, and overtime. If there's no corrections or corrections, I would look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries. New business. Okay, we'll start off. Officer Boukab.
Mr. Mayor, Council, pleasure being here in front of my folks this evening. Looks like I have two items on the agenda. First is a motion to approve resolution number 0924-68, which is para for our new officer, Harry Nelson.
Excellent. Good news, and is this the one that makes us a complete?
It is. Makes us up to total 13, including Chief Man.
Excellent. All right, council, I would look for a motion to approve resolution 0924-68.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? Besides, congratulations and welcome, Officer Nelson. All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
And the second item I have is approval for the Armored VDA portable radio connectivity VDA system. That's a public safety. So a little background with the system, anytime there's a new building, sometimes there's some quirks that need to be fixed, and we find things that may not work as good as they may have said they should work. So basically, what the gist of the system does is it allows our portable radios to have coverage throughout our public safety building. If we're in further confines within the building, our portable radios do not work right now. We have no coverage whatsoever. So this system basically takes a signal from outside the building, transmits it into the building, and then disperses it throughout the inside of the building, so we actually can hear our radios. So public safety concern, obviously, for all of us in a lot of enforcement EMS and fire, because this is our main way to communicate with our dispatch, how we receive and transmit calls. So this system will greatly improve our connectivity with inside the building. So asking for council approval for this system, which would be provided by the Superior Communications, which is one of the main radio vendors in northern Minnesota.
And also, if there's not any questions, I would look for a motion to approve moving forward with the Armored Radio Connectivity at the Public Safety Building.
Mr. Mayor, no question.
Yes.
Will this give us tones in the building too?
So what it will do is it will provide signal to all of our portable radios, and I believe pagers as well, if they run off on the towers.
Okay.
So right now, we have three existing base radios that are strategically placed throughout the building, but those are base radios. They're stationary, they do not, they're on portals, we can't go into another room and hear or transmit out. The only way we can do that is on our portals, so it should actually improve like cell service as well within the building. No fault to its own, but the public safety building is a brick building, and it has brick interior walls, so as you all know, cell phone service is diminished with that type of building as well. So that's the unfortunate part with our public safety radios, is they're building a cell phone. So hopefully that answers your question.
No, I'm just talking with the overhead tones, if you didn't have your pager on you or your radio, that you hear, see her in there somewhere, you hear tones go off without your equipment on.
Well, so if we added a, we would have to add another.
Speed thing, a speaker system.
Yeah. Yep. So what we, what you could do is the existing base radios that are there, you could put a splitter on one of those speaker wires, and then just add an additional speaker.
Right.
And I know there was talk about doing that, like in the base, so if you're working or if you're in any one's loading of equipment, you can hear the actual radio in the base, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, council, I would look for a motion to approve the bid of $17,275.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
I'll second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, would you please turn to page 37 and go up to the portable through the application number 18 for our public safety building? Hopefully, the next one will be a final one. If you go to column G on page 37, which is the work completed this period, typically in the past, previous pay applications, we have added up all those numbers that are in the construction aspect that are above that line that I put in there, just below And that was part of that, excuse me, the, yeah, the construction fee that you see is, which is down there, is item number 22. We, I would add up all those numbers above that line and apply the 1.1 and 3/4% to come up with that below number. The construction, this time it's different because we are at the end of the project. The construction fee was part of the contract with P. Alson and Peterson, and that's based on the construction costs at bid, and that number per the contract with A&amp;P was $192,628 that you see in column C. So if you look under item, the second 22 item, it says construction fee, if you go across column C, that's $192,628 per the contract. And then, if you go to column F, in that same line, what we paid out to date is $180,362.3 cents. So that construction fee for this pay application is that difference of $12,265.95. So you know where that number comes from, it's just a little bit different. Then if you jump over to the first column under column I, the total work completed and stored to date, unfortunately, travis isn't here, we've got no construction materials on site anymore, so that number is down to zero, and it's going to be out. But anyway, adding up the numbers that I do have in brackets there amounts to $992,053.53, and if we apply it to 5%, that's going for the retainage there, that is the $454,602.68 that we'll see when we go back to page 36. But the total number then of the total work completed, that I want you to see also, that will go back to page 36, is that total work completed to date, including our storage, which is, total work completed today is $10,955, excuse me, $10,955,377.53. And then if you'll jump back into page 36, on that left-hand side of the page, you see the original contract, it was at $11,199,947. And then, going down item four, that total work completed and stored to date that we just talked about, being the $10,955,377.53. Item five being the retainage that we just calculated on the previous page at $454,602.68. So what would be, should be paid out to the contractor for this pay application in total, would be $10,507,748.85. But we have already paid out in previous 17 pay applications, $10,116,986.77. Since the payment due per pay application number eight is $383,718.1. And I would have to answer any questions if I can, and I would recommend approval of pay application number 18 in that amount of $383,718.85.
Thank you, Jim. I'm not going to repeat that number a fifth time, so I think we got it. I would look for a motion to approve pay application number 18.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Quickly, the same exercise, Phil Kim, turn to page 41 and 42. Just a quick way so you can know what's going on. During this past month of August, much of the work in all the provision of the utility work was started then on the street reconstruction. Since if you look on pages 41 and 42 and go over to the columns that are quantity this period and amount this period, gives you the good indication for that majority work is. On page 41, you'll see common excavation amount of do, almost $42,600. Selective radio borrow would be part of the street reconstruction, allowing the nearly $23,000. Our geotextile fabrics, which were materials on hand in the last pay application, are now gone and now are being paid out in full. Those holding about $32,000, $33,000, and so on down, just for your information and review. And then, if you don't have questions, or we can start to go back, if you go back to page 40, then you'll see the original contract was $266,700. There have been no revisions or changes that have affected that cost. So the work completed to date is $1,504,403.7. There's no stored material, so that's the subtotal. We reduce the retainage again by 5%, which now amounts to $75,220.15. And then less the previous payments of $1,182,827.29, such that the amount due for this pay application number six is $246,355.63. Now, if you have any questions, if you might have, but I would recommend payment in that amount, please.
All right, council, I'd look for a motion to approve application number six in the amount of $246,355.63.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
I'll second.
Thank you, Marty. Do you have any questions, or?
Okay. Didn't we approve a small changer, change over for a slight increase in the manhole height, something to lift from the station?
I don't think there was a financial change on it.
I think there was a change in the height.
Change of height, I thought it was $1,000 or something.
That was, um, no, I think that was something else, where it was the drilling. I think there was a different subject.
Isn't there a small change around?
Wasn't like a concrete or something where they were drilling?
Yeah, we had to raise, in order to meet the elevation, it was the old driveway in our building, those long sections were being developed.
Maybe it hasn't gone through JP.
It hasn't. I think we brought it through council, but it hasn't gotten incorporated into this issue already. Very lucky, thank you for doing this.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
If you go to page 45, the following pages, you see the proposal from Woodset and the helping, provide professional engineering consulting services on the Thomasiana, a more than large project. You'll see that it's, they identify the scope of services, and then propose a estimated cost of $16,000 to provide those services, which would be made on an hourly basis for the, for the actual time put into the project. And the city is just the financial agent on this, so we have to take care of processing the pay applications and seeking reimbursement of those costs, but otherwise, the city is not involved directly in providing other services on this project. So with that, I will, Queen Stephanie, I would pray you answer any questions that you might have, but we would recommend approval of that proposal.
Thank you, Jed. Council, I would look for a motion to approve the proposal from Woodset and the estimated cost of $16,000.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Little works, Larry, good evening, again.
Thank you, Mayor. First, page 51, is our master service agreement with, with HR Green, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't do master service agreements, a lot of it's really not. So I had to learn what it was, and basically I had a couple jabs for Attorney Lindsay, but since he's not here, I'll save that, and it's, it's really the nuts and bolts of the contractors don't want. And it's, it's really the nuts and bolts of the contractors, no money tied to the master service agreement. It's just all the terms and conditions, billing, you know, uh, you know, all those certain things. So, um, maybe Marty actually has a lot more, um, experience with it than I do, but it's really, it's really just a small print of, uh, and there's no money tied to it. All that comes into work orders after, but this is, um, this is to help facilitate and hire them for, uh, for work on their ninety thousand dollar grant, the storm store grant that we were awarded. And then we will also be using some of the sewer funds with your approval, uh, for the things that are uncovered. I did meet with Phil, you know, he's that representative that'll be administering our, and helping us through that ninety thousand dollar grant that was here with the council stuff and needs support as well. So this is really just a master service agreement to, uh, to get them on board. So HR Green has done a lot of work for us over the years. They were the ones that, um, helped design the, uh, Sinburner and Shenfreys sewer district and then our switch over, our upgrade store, lift station and all that, shutting down our old sewer plant. So he has a lot of knowledge that he doesn't have to look for, um, and he's not working to see right along the time. So I haven't actually met him, uh, in six years, you know, almost six years now that I've been here, but he's right up to speed. He knows, he knows what he, uh, what he uses on watches and so I think we can save money and he's also doing market signage as well, so we can work together.
Excellent. And counsel, I'll look for a motion to approve the master service agreement with HR Green.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion or questions?
Are you going to sit on any meetings on sponsors?
Absolutely, I have your studies, so that I swear I showed you ahead, so.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and, uh, I hope to do a, uh, an option this fall, yeah, try to get rid of like the ladder truck, um, get that before it gets cold and something freezes and it's, uh, it's no longer usable. You know, somebody I got to imagine would really like that ladder truck, so the area and stuff like that, so. And, uh, I, I did provide a pretty detailed list. We don't have a lot, but we have some stuff we'd like to move before winter, so. With that, I'd ask you for your support in resolution number zero-nine-two-four-dash-six-nine to declare, uh, some city equipment surplus.
And counsel, I would look for a motion to approve resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-six-nine.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, good evening.
So on page seventy of your packet, you have a donation from our Friends of the Library. Um, just to share a bit about this group, I know there's a lot of history and a lot of them probably not even aware of. Um, and while I don't have the exact date, I know they've been around for a very long time. Um, so over the last ten years, it's kind of been a slow dissolving of the group. And over the years, I think members just moved on to different endeavors or passed away. Um, so the mind reflected here tonight is leftover funds from previous fundraising efforts. And so I just want to thank anyone that has served on the Friends of the Library for the time and the efforts towards supporting and advocating for the library over the years. I know in the past they've had, um, packed socials and organized book sales among a lot of other efforts to show support for the library. One of the projects I do want to take a moment to highlight is a framed photo display tour that showcases ten photos of the Chisholm Public Library that date back to the nineteen twenties. And that project is still on display at the library, and I would highly encourage people to check that out if they haven't already. So with that, just a huge thank you to anybody that's been a part of that, and we'll give you doc resolutions zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-zero and earmark the funds for the Chisholm Library.
And I can also look for a motion to approve, uh, resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-zero.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? Again, thank you to the Friends of the, the library, and, uh, I'm sure a card already went out. Right, so thank you, Katie.
Aye.
Thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Treasurer, Devin, welcome back.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, Jeff's real here for the audit report, um, for formal presentation to the council. Administrator, uh, myself, went through, uh, audit report in, in detail with Long and from screen, I think earlier, we got a little still. But, uh, Jeff is here to present the final report for council.
Evening, sir.
Evening. If I wanted for quite a detail, I believe that I'm not going to spend that much time. Um, I actually, I've actually received two different reports. There's the bound one is the financial statements we're going to cover. The other report is there, it's basically a report that if there were issues encountered during the audit that aren't in the audit report, we had some, uh, difficulties, they would be in that report. Since there were no issues, it just becomes purely boilerplate, so it's just functionality we have to go through, but there's really nothing else other than boilerplate, okay? So I'm not going to spend any time on that other than mention what it is. Um, basically, uh, it's a six and nine page report here that I'm not going to go through page by page. I basically have my top ten, just, I guess, just touch base on a few items that, uh, there's a quick pick in there, so. Um, to start with, the, um, the statements themselves, we received unqualified opinion again, which basically means it's a clean audit opinion. Also this year, because we had received over seven, expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds, it was required single audit in addition to the financial statement audit. It's part of the report, but it is basically a whole separate, um, some extra hoops we have to jump through to, to provide that. Um, that also had no significant issues on that, so for the most part, that is basically clean report. The, um, as far as the number side of things, your general fund has been healthier the last few years, and you've got even a little bit healthier this year. You're sitting at roughly eleven and a half million dollars of, of equity. And when we talk about fund balance, it's basically to assets, margin of slide, movies, that's what you want left over. So that's sitting at eleven and a half million, that actually improved by, from the prior year by roughly two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so, so, uh, general fund is healthy. Also, um, getting healthier is a permanent improvement fund. That has had a deficit for the last couple of years, even though we spent a lot of money through there this year, all that was grant money. So we actually, uh, smoked that from a three hundred thousand dollar deficit a year ago to two hundred thousand dollar positive fund balance this year, so, um, um, that's good news. You, even though the equity or the fund balance is positive, we really didn't have any cash mainly because of all the spending with the public safety building. You know, a bunch of grant receivables at the end of the year, that money's tripled in, in two thousand, in two thousand twenty-four, but, um, as of the end of the year, like I said, the fund looks much better than it did, has looked in the past few years, so. We, um, back to the general fund for just a second, we prepare our budget every year, um, and one part of the financial statements is to compare your general fund budget to the actual expenditures. This year you overextended, expenditures were overextended by a hundred and eighty-eight thousand over what you had budgeted. But on the flip side, you also brought in about a hundred and forty thousand dollars more in revenues that you had budgeted, so for the most part, that budget is, is pretty close and we can keep that together, so. Um, as far as the good news again, uh, moving on to the water fund. Last year in two thousand twenty-two, we have, the water fund had about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of deficit spending in negative cash accounts. So it's borrowed from other funds to get that cash balance up to zero. It's still not positive, but at the end of the year, we were sitting at just a negative seventeen thousand dollars, so that has shown improvement. Um, the, um, the water fund itself, as far as operations, you went from a seventy-eight thousand dollar net loss to net income of eighty-four thousand, so that has set in the right direction. Garbage fund, um, that's been, that's been stable, but it also went from a forty-eight thousand dollar net income in twenty-two to eighty-seven thousand and twenty-three, so that's positive note. Um, campground fund, you know, showed pretty close where we were in twenty-two, went from about a thirty-one thousand net income to thirty-nine dollars this last year. The sewer fund, uh, that one, um, basically are still showing a deficit in that one. We had a net loss in twenty-two, a hundred and six thousand, um, this year is a hundred and twelve thousand. But the thing about that fund is because of, we're profitable in the past, we do have a healthy cash balance that ourselves. The only thing with, with, with your enterprise funds, water and sewer, anytime you get into PFA money from the state, they always push to show that income. And the whole idea above that is if you got that income, that means you've got some cash, and next time you have projects, so you don't have to lock it on their door for coins much money. So they push to always shoot for that, um, positive outcomes of incomes funds. Um, the big spending for the year, of course, was the public safety building, roughly six point six million got spent on, on that during the past year, so. And, and we're probably in the line now, again, just thought Kevin F finally had completed, so very nice addition to the, to the city. A lot of people don't think they'd ever see it, um, it's a nice addition. Um, the, um, the, you know, the, we've talked in the past, basically, the post, other posts and claim benefits, basically covering health insurance for retirees. In two thousand twelve, we had a, um, balance on that as far as actually the complete liability of just under twelve million dollars. This year we got it down to about nine million dollars, and a lot of that is actually has changed their minds on things as they go along, let's see, maybe we can tweak this, maybe we can tweak that. So it wasn't that you, you know, we had a bunch of people dieouts for not putting that much into it or anything, it's, it's more a piece of just those, uh, calculations that they do is what they're, what they're working after. They're constantly finding tuning, so that was the reason for that decrease. The, um, the last thing is, we talked about good things, the enterprise comes in there. The one bad thing that we, that we have is in addition to the regular financial statement audit and the sort of single audit, it also required by the state auditor to do a legal, necessarily legal compliance audit. And that we have a specific manual, we've got to look and test certain items during the year. Basically, that came out pretty clean, except you did have one little glitch, there was a, um, you fell short on your collateral for your bank deposits. But the, but the state requires, it was FDIC covers a small portion of your cash. Over those amounts, they require you to have, have the bank set aside collateral in the event, in the event that they go belly out, that the city isn't, um, caught short. So with that, you're short a little bit this year, and that's, and that's very common that I can all that, those, those things happen. The, the big thing I always got to keep in mind is when the city gets, is looking at getting a big chunk of money, that's maybe you get a large branch or whatever, so obviously the cash is going to go up. Sometimes it's good to work with the bank to let them know, well, you know, we're going to, that cash balance is going to go up, so we need to, to tweak our collateral, so. That's everything pretty much in a little way. If you haven't answered any questions, if you're looking through the financial statements on loan, if you have any questions, you know, like, uh, we're always happy to answer questions if you want to give us a call or whatever. So that's what I wanted to touch base on, so.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much, sir. Um, good information, I think that's very reflective of how we're, how hard our staff is working to change a lot of those around. So I think Stephanie and our supervisors are doing great work. Appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, moving along. Stephanie?
Good evening. Uh, the first item I have on the agenda is resolution number zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-one. This resolution is authorizing, uh, city administrator make application and accept funds to the Department of Energy Resources and Rehabilitation. As you can see in your packet, what is it? It is for a sign, um, for the Tomasoni Memorial Cross Range Expressway Sign Project in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, it has the intersection listed in the packet also. Ready for a type of wire.
Okay. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-one.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? For anyone at home, it looks like that's going to be labeling the eastbound one sixty-nine east of Cassaw with sixty-nine in Marble and westbound US one sixty-nine west of Cassaw seven in Molten Iron. And that will be the Senator David J. Tomasoni Memorial Cross Range Expressway. So if there's nothing further, I'd, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have on the agenda is resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-two, appointment of trustees. We'll have a couple, um, resolutions here with Devin starting as the new clerk treasurer. Our first one is for, um, the force five-seven deferred account plan to have him listed on that.
Counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-two.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne, second. Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have on the agenda is resolution number zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-three, the appointment of authorized signers. Um, again, this is with the, with Devin starting here of the city, to allow as authorized signer for First National Bank.
And counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-three.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have on the agenda is, I was contacted by Dylan Samsa requesting a purchase to, uh, adjacent to his existing lots. Um, in your packet, we have the property details of those two lots. It's not with us here today, um, and then there's also a mapping in the packet, his proposed purchase price of what he would like to purchase those both lots for in the past, what we usually have done is market value on, um, lots that we've purchased.
Okay, counsel, um, I'm not about to set new precedents, uh, and we do have his offer on here, um, I'm not sure what your feelings are, so. Uh, everyone else in town, um, that we've done this for has paid the estimated market value.
Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming this is twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, so the first lot there has that estimated market value of seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars. And he did offer twenty-five hundred in the second property, estimated market value of seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, Mr. Samsa wants to come back and have a discussion, I would welcome it, but, uh, I don't feel that we take any action on this.
You can contact him?
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on.
Oh, the next item I have on, in the packet is resolution number zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-four, the PFA Clean Water Rebound Collection Bond. Um, you have that on your, it's stuck in the packet, it would be on the, on the tape out there. We've been working with Long Council on getting this finalized, and we received it earlier this week. So it's going to be the final step of the PFA for Fifth Street. So we're looking for approval for this resolution. Move forward with the bond.
And counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-four.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Marty.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then we also have one more for the PFA, Drinking Water Water Name Bond, resolution number zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-five. Brian has reviewed both of these and he worked with Long Council on them.
And counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-five.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next few items, I do have a few Bridgetts on vacation, so I have a few that are coming out of Parks and Rec. Um, next one's the resolution number zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-six, authorizing city admin, city administrator to accept CDVG funds. We have already received the CDVG funds in the amount of seventy thousand dollars from Memorial Park that they're currently working on. So resolution to accept those funds.
Okay, counsel, look for a motion to approve resolution zero-nine-two-four-dash-seven-six.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item I have on the agenda is to approve a skating rink job description. Um, the changes from twenty-twenty-two are pay rate increase from thirteen dollars, fifteen fifty to fourteen, up to sixteen fifty per hour.
And counsel, I'll look for a motion to make that, uh, change? Approve that change?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next would be to approve a skating rink attendant job posting, so Bridget's getting ready for winter.
And counsel, I'll look for a motion to approve the, uh, job posting, the skating rink attendant?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, sorry. Last item that I have is to approve to hire up to five qualified candidates after we have posted an interview for these.
And counsel, I'll look for a motion to approve to hire up to five qualified candidates.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Support. Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And counsel, next up, we're going to look at scheduling a working session? Budget working session?
Yes.
Um, I would like to look at the first week in October, so at this point, Devon and I are, um, just finalizing some of the revenues and our expenses this week, next week, we're going to meet with, with the department heads, narrow down the budget, and then hopefully we can meet the council in that first week of October. And just a reminder, we do set preliminary, um, levy, will be our next September meeting, um, but by that point, we will have met with the department heads and we should kind of clear.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure what everybody else feels about that week, uh, October first? Works for me.
Also works for me.
Park Board meeting at five o'clock on the first?
Okay. We do Wednesday?
Redhead meeting at four, should say, five thirty? And five, five thirty, obviously would be. Five thirty would be dinner?
Five thirty works for me. Second? Yep, that works.
Five thirty, second.
For a motion for, uh, scheduling a, um, budget working session for October second at five thirty PM? Make a motion? Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, miscellaneous, um, speaking of Redhead, um, I was thinking because of those other ones that are coming off here, I'd like to schedule a, um, you can do a working session with the council and Redhead Committee. Maybe we can get brought up to speed, and we kind of look over those, and some information can come back, so that way whenever the contract comes back to the council, we're a little more informed. So does Redhead meet every, the first Monday of the month, or?
It's usually twice a month. But since we have Liberty, we've stacked three meetings in three weeks.
Okay.
September twenty, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, October two. And then not again until October fifteenth.
That works? Oh, September seventeenth? I guess we, uh, declare that a seven, September seventeenth meeting? A little working session? Does that work?
We have, I mean, some other things on the agenda, I believe, uh, Statelligent is coming to present.
Oh.
Would we want to just have the committee come here and meet with the council on the seventeenth? Yeah, but it's far a clock, you know, it's at Bar and Mary.
Okay.
We could do it here in the chamber, so, uh, over there.
Yeah, we, what, what we do at the Public Safety Building and Conference Hall? Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Four PM on the seventeenth?
I can make four PM on the seventeenth work?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Alright, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Support. Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you all, uh, now we will be recessing into a closed session in compliance with statute thirteen D point oh-three labor agreement, so I would welcome everybody here, have a good night.